It is 6:31. I would like to bring the January 17th Select Board Meeting to order. We have a roll call vote, starting with Kathy Bellotta. Here, and John Round.
Here.
And Harrison.
Here.
And Becky Jakes is here. We have quorum. Brian Solacey is not here this evening. Before we get started, are there any public comments on non-agenda items? If there are comments, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to Chairman's Report and Action Items. So we have today, we will be working on the quarterly reviews, but not doing those today. Task Force, we're having them here today. We're going to discuss preparing comprehensive options for Pine Street traffic calming today. Are we discussing the ambulance repair, or is that on hold, Greg?
So basically, I think that's on hold.
Per the chief, till we figure out what?
Yes.
Okay.
Figure out what?
Well, whether he's asking for the ambulance, the ladder.
You can take it up as an initial discussion on your end this evening. It is on the agenda. And then perhaps make a final decision with Finance Committee on the night.
Would you like to discuss it? Is that?
Personally, I think we need to think a lot before we decide to buy a new ladder truck.
Okay, well then, well, that's, that's, do you, do you want to discuss the ambulance options or not tonight? It is on the, I almost said the menu, but, okay, all right, so we will do that.
That's connected though, to the, it's all connected.
It's all connected.
Yep, and then we are getting a regional report this evening, the Dispatch Community Outreach. And we're deferring the Harbor Master till the next meeting.
Are we storing the Harbor Master, or is the Harbor Master storing?
The storage question will be deferred.
Yes, yeah, we're not deferring them, I hope not anyway. Okay, so to the next meeting.
We may have the HAC of that same easy to talk about.
Yeah, which might work well. So that's, that will be on February 6th. Where we wanted by on Todd and Advisory Committee together, right? So do that to 6. Okay, got that Debbie?
Yep.
Excellent. All right. Excuse me, Becky?
Yes, Kathy?
Hi, just a couple of things I noticed on the action items.
Yes.
I think there's one there that maybe completed, it's from November 21. It had to do with the sea level rise presentation. It has a due date of December of 2023. And I'm wondering if that was perhaps a typo, because we had a presentation on that in December of 2022. So I just wanted to double check that and see if that's still an existing action.
No, that, that is a check off.
Is this?
Right, and then the other item, I think we may have accidentally misplaced an action or, because we had an action from the board perspective to provide Greg with ideas on items to take off the plate of the Select Board, things like tree hearings, et cetera. And maybe we just need to add an action to have the results of Greg's investigation, you know, with his team to come back to us with their recommendations. I'm not sure we, we completed all that.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we will get that for the next meeting? Or?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that should be done.
Okay.
Something that probably should be an action item, we're still considering the revision of the policy on appointments. And, yeah.
Yeah, I pulled up some other towns, their appointments, so I'm going to put it in like a spreadsheet format, so you can see what, how they do it, so, because I pulled up like six, seven towns.
Great, great, great.
I'll get that together. I kind of remembered that today.
That's why this action list is so good, Kathy Bellotta. Well done. Revision of...
Well, it wasn't on it, so it didn't, no.
No, but I just love that we have this.
It helps remind us.
Okay, so do we want to have a target date for that?
If you could get that to, as soon as you can get that to me, John, and I can take on the problem of iterating that information with what we've currently got, what our current practices.
I can probably get that to you this week.
So the owner and John, the owner and the?
No, the owner is dead.
Okay, Debbie is the owner. Alrighty. Okay, any other items that are on our action items list? Okay, so next on the, well, first on the agenda, we have the Water Resource Protection Task Force update. And John, are you doing that? Who is?
Well, I think Steve should probably be up there.
I'm looking for him. No.
No, I don't, I don't see him.
I see an iPad, but that, don't know who that is.
He should be here.
Well, if you want to give him a few more minutes, do you want, are you going to text him, or I can text him? Why don't you text him, and in the meantime, we can look at the consent agenda? Did everybody have a chance to go over, approve of the minutes of December 19th? Kathy? Kathy's nodding, yes. John?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 19th?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellotta. Rule call vote, Kathy Bellotta.
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jakes says yes. Okay. We're going to need more than just...
We can deal with the horse, with the animal, which I think we should approve.
Okay, are there, okay, I agree. Okay, so I have a motion to approve the Keeper of Animals permit at 89 Bridge Street for the Magonuses. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by John Round. Rule call vote, Kathy Bellotta.
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jakes says yes. Unanimous. Okay. We can do liaison updates if somebody would, if there are any to be done at the moment. Did I bring that, or did I not bring that? I didn't bring it. Ann, do you have any liaison?
The school continues to work on their budget. School committee meeting was interesting.
How so?
I had expected the school committee to be very strongly in favor of more money for schools. And there were a number of people there who were concerned that we were, that they were asking too much from the towns. I'm not, that, I think they're, they're going to have to, they're not, certainly not ready to approve a budget right now.
Okay, and they're meeting next, not this Thursday, but the following Thursday with FinCom, correct?
Yes, and the collaboration group is meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay, and where is the collaboration meeting?
At the high school.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
It's not an open meeting.
So it is not an open meeting?
No.
And, okay, and then with FinCom. All right.
They have done a recent study, and I did not get a copy of it, of the change in student population. How many students are actually going to private school from each town? And that was slightly surprising with the...
They don't have that.
They do have that. I don't have a copy of it. I didn't try and get a copy of it.
Yeah.
But it, it appears from what they have been able to find, that in fact, there is a drop in the number of students in both towns, number of kids of school age. And the...
So it's, it's a decrease in the number of school age, not those just attending.
Not just those attending.
Oh, okay.
I think the difference in the memorial school is 150 students or more over the grades from their peak. My recollection of the number of kids, who, percent of kids who go to private school, Manchester's percent hasn't changed much recently, but Essex had an increase in the number of students who went to private schools between grade eight and grade nine, which is, either in grade eight or grade nine, which is interesting, and not what they expected to find.
But don't they work in, when they're planning schools, they, they have a sense of ebb and flow?
They have a sense, they know approximately how many kids are going to show up for pre-K and kindergarten. But in terms of when, if a kid goes off to Rookwood or whatever, or one of the high schools or that, the other thing that I need to get clarity on is whether that includes kids who go to the... What do you speak, yeah, the VOTAC, I'm trying not to call it Essex Aggie.
Right.
Yeah, agricultural technical school. I believe that there are a large number of students going from Essex.
Yes, they've had a bigger increase than we had.
Yes.
Both seem a pretty sizable increase.
And it's getting much harder to get into.
Yes.
Much harder.
Yeah, so.
Okay, good, and you can...
I told, Kathy asked what they had done about trying to reduce their shortfall. And I was unable to get time with Van and Abi in the past two weeks. They, they, they were very busy preparing for this, for the school committee meeting. And after that, I just couldn't buggle anymore.
No, we might get some information tomorrow.
We will get some information tomorrow, and I'll try and get some more, but...
Certainly, they should be prepared for that for a week from Thursday with the FinCom.
Kathy, did you want to say something?
No, that's great. No, I just wanted to thank you, Ann, for that.
Something that you may not, that may not be obvious, is that this is not a one-year dip. This is a, has been a constant, basically since I've been following the school committee, which is a long time.
Yep.
Their expenditures are such that every year they need some form of replenishment, whether it's from the reserves or from a step increase from accounts. And this is, as I say, this has been going on since the beginning of the district. And it has, has to do, somewhat has to do with the way their pay scale works, and somewhat just that providing a high-quality education is expensive. And the other towns that have equivalent schools have the same problem. So not looking for something that's going to be a quick fix if we discover that they're actually pouring money down the toilet or something. No.
Well, and, and I suppose the question begs, at what point do you look for another model? I mean, this is, we've been doing public education the same way for a long time now.
In fact, they are using a different model now than they were.
You said, yeah.
And that was a new model from 10 years ago, I guess. Mostly it's, it's more inclusion of kids with special needs and more focus on, currently the focus is on producing graduates, every graduate prepared for life after high school. And that requires a different approach to teaching and a different approach to... And there are certainly other ways of doing it, and if we wanted to be win, it would be a very different place, but...
Yep.
I'm not sure Manchester, Essex is prepared to invent an entirely new way of providing education. That's, I have nothing to say about the ConCom.
Okay, Kathy?
I just, I believe there's a Planning Board retreat coming up.
Yes.
And it has not, it was not posted last time I checked, but I think it's Monday, at 6:30. So I just wanted to make mention of that.
Okay, thank you. And that's actually going to be taking place at the Community Center. At, is it 6:30 or 7:00, Greg? I've got that, 6:30?
I think it's 6:30.
It's 6:30, I think.
And it is, it is going to be in-person meeting, so not Zoom, but, but public is invited if they would like. John?
I got a meet, I've got a note here from Steve that he says he's coming on presently. So, do you see him yet?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Oh, then he's there.
Okay, well, and I'm, we do have Chuck Damm slated for 7 o'clock, so we will...
This is, okay.
Okay, great.
This is an update, it's not a long-term.
Right.
I want to be here for Steve's presentation.
Yes, you do. You've seen the slides, but...
I don't really think I'll lag out.
No, 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 just want to make sure that we don't keep you here longer than necessary. Hi, Steve, how are you this evening?
I'm good. I'm really sorry I'm late. I had you all down for 7 o'clock. Sorry.
No.
No, that's all, it's, it's okay, not a problem. Steve Gang of the ConCom, who is reporting on Water Resources Protection Task Force. Take it away, Steve.
All right, may I share my screen?
Please do.
I think you need to give me permission.
Greg's working on that.
Yeah, I'm doing it right now.
Would it, do you have to invite the people who are?
Okay, thank you.
To use those?
Yeah, come on over if you all, Chuck, if you'd rather sit over here, if you're more comfortable.
It would have broken my neck if you though.
Maybe for the next one.
Right.
All right, can you see the title slide, update for the Select Board?
Yes.
We do.
Thank you.
Good, and just so I don't wear on my welcome, how long have you allocated for this?
Well, we had given you a half an hour.
A year.
So...
Turns out 20 minutes of it, or?
Well, no, you know, we'll just, if we can, we, we can move along, that would be fine.
All right.
It's up to Chuck.
Just stop me when you need to, otherwise I'll proceed at a rapid pace. Apologies again. We have not met since September. We haven't had an update since September. We've been working. Kind of feverishly, the six working groups are still making progress. The volunteer effort is, is really significant, my experience. The six groups focus on usage, on supply, on climate change, on quality, on citizen engagement, and then on responsibility and metrics. We've got significant new input from Scott Boersley and his colleague Darren Trozlow. And Scott has gotten his PhD students at Harvard and Tufts involved. So we've got more bang for our buck there. There's more to come in the next month. We look forward to findings and recommendation. We've also had superb support and guidance from Chuck Damm, Nate DeRozier, and Sue Taylor at the Water Department, providing data and such. Town is really fortunate to have these folks, and we certainly are. We plan to report our findings and recommendations on schedule, which would be in time for you to have a good chance to review them for the town meeting, and certainly wind up before the end of this little year. We are discussing possible recommendations for budget. We put a kind of placeholder into Greg, I think, for things like ongoing work monitoring contaminants with some monitoring wells, stepping up the conservation, education, and outreach, helping out where we can with the things like analyzing the impact of potential rate changes, with new meters, real-time information, and either staffing or volunteers, both, to maintain some momentum, because we think that's quite important. Just to take a step backwards, look backwards, you remember that there was a study 30-some years ago by Boersley and Witten, and they produced a raft of recommendations, some of which were implemented right away. Overall protection was changed for health regulations about point source. Contaminants were changed. We didn't change anything about subdivision rules and regs. And we, you know, we made some progress on the non-regulatory questions, but basically they're all still on the table. You see them listed there. We were impressed by how insightful this report was and the work that the Standing Committee at that time did on these six or seven fronts, most of which were still, all of which were still grappling. In terms of what we learned, this is in a bunch of headlines, very bluntly stated. Manchester uses a lot of drinking water compared to other cities or towns. And that's largely because of our summer usage, which reflects the fact that we irrigate too much. Too much drinking water is used on plants. Again, this is compared to any of the 270 or 280 other municipality cities and towns in Commonwealth. We also are wasteful in terms of water that leaves our plant, it's finished water, but never gets metered. So that could be leaks, it could be errors in the meter accuracy, it could be un-metered use. But those three first bullet points, unfortunately, we found that Manchester is pretty much in the 10 worst towns or cities in Massachusetts on all three of those dimensions. Now, we're making progress on the third one, so that's not to be overlooked, but this is not the picture of the town we expected that we would see, and it certainly can't help when the state water people look at our performance relative to our neighbors, relative to any other town, even towns like us with similar income levels and properties and whatnot. We also identified growing issues about PFAS, in particular, a few other contaminants. But PFAS really took the spotlight, and it's clear that the EPA is back up and running despite four years of being extremely quiet and understaffed, and PFAS is one of their primary areas. We expect new regulations this month, which will be translated into new state regulations in Massachusetts and elsewhere, which we will have to face, as will most other towns, because PFAS is endemic. It's in everybody's waters and everybody's body. We identified other concerns, and climate change helped out here by the Create Task Force, which is just finalizing its report from the summer. Concerns from development and concerns from, we don't know, yet to be recognized contaminants, because 30 years ago, no one had heard of perfluoral alphas or alcohols, although they were in widespread use. None of you had sort of studied them or determined their toxicity, or carcinogenic, carcinogenic features, et cetera. So there are probably things, there are certainly things like that in the environment right now, which will be identified. Historically, we have to say, it's likely that we will take our eye off these strategic issues collectively once the Task Force wraps up, and we'll do our utmost and ask for a lot of help from you, the Select Board, to make sure that doesn't happen once again, because the issues that face us are more urgent than they were 30 years ago. And finally, and not to be overlooked, Manchester is blessed with ample short-term supplies of drinking water. In other words, if we did not restrict water usage during droughts, we'd probably be fine because of the work done more than 100 years ago by Manchester residents and town officials to acquire the water in Round Pond and Gravelly Pond, and well, embrace the use of wells and those, those water rights in perpetuity. So we're, we're, we don't acknowledge the importance of this legacy, but the Task Force has become quite aware that we are benefiting from things people did more than 100 years ago, and we would like to repay the favor and do things that people 100 years from now will be able to, be able to praise. All right, a few details, just to orient you. We use about 150 million gallons of water per year, give or take, for our meters. But we finish, we process about 200 million gallons, which leave our treatment facilities at Gravelly Pond and Lincoln Street well. More than 90%, actually more than 95% most years, is used by residential customers. So we don't have, there are many or very many large commercial customers, or governmental, anything else. The DDP's Water Management Act permits us to withdraw 250 million gallons of water per year, sorry, yeah, per year as an average, and we can exceed that day to day, probably could exceed it in an exceptional year, as long as we don't make a practice error. And that's based on the state's estimate of capacity of where we draw our water, the sub-basin, which includes the Apple Burst came out wells and the Gravelly Pond service for the water. We showed you these things back in September. This is just the data demonstrating, compared in this case to our neighboring towns. And Manchester, in a given year, uses more gallons per capita per day than any other town near us. And we exceed, we're the only town around here that exceeds the state standard 65 gallons per day per capita. It puts us, as I said, among the 10 worst, 287 community cities and towns. Same thing for unaccounted water. We brought this down. It used to be significantly higher. It is now running 20 to 25%, hopefully less with continued work on water mains. But you know, we have a long way to go to get to the state standard 10% unaccounted water. And then, you know, we looked across the border at Essex, the kind of remarkable 5.5% unaccounted water. This is not only an extra cost to us, but it's a, it's an impatience to the state that we are not accomplishing what we should in terms of conservation in a general sense. Combine those two things, and in terms of the water we actually use and the water we process but don't use, we're way out of whack compared to other towns. And that's partly, or actually in large measure, because in the summer, our drinking water usage bumps up to a much greater set than other towns. We're higher than, in this respect, we're higher than towns like Dover or Weston, that have lots of valuable properties and quite high average household income. We've broken this down. You'll be seeing more of this kind of display. This is nine segments of our residential users, described as relatively low users, less than 75,000 gallons per year per household, which would be around 30 gallons per person per day for a three-person household, 75,000 to 150,000 gallons and more than 150,000 gallons. We also broke down the, how close are summer and winter? Here, summer and winter are quite close. Summer is not more than 25,000. Here, summer and winter are quite close, summer is not more than 25 percent more. Here, it's 25 to 100 percent more than winter, and here it's more than 100 percent. It's more than twice the winter usage. You can see immediately that the big runners here are the summer usage from 150 households here, another 170 here. If we want to achieve significant conservation in the near term, we need to find a way for these people to enjoy the benefits they want from their property, but not to use so much drinking water in irrigating. And we are grappling with that. And that's all we plan to say tonight about it, but obviously you'll see some directions we need to head for that to happen. Some details on PFAS. These are perfloral alpha substances. This is a family of, depending on how you count it, ten to fifteen thousand synthetic chemicals that don't break down usually, hence they're called forever chemicals. They're used in a fairly widespread collection of consumer and industrial products. Most fast food packaging uses them, Gore-Tex and stain repellent. Use them in fabrics, carpets, furniture. They're used to facilitate industrial processes like extrusion. So for instance, for a long time, they have been used to produce artificial turf, which is extruded each blade. They're in automobiles, they're in construction products, they're in paint and roofing equipment. It's remarkable how widespread they are, given how dangerous they are. As a result, they're found in virtually everybody's blood, associated, as I said, with various carcinogenic, carcinogenic kinds of issues. So the DDP requires that we test for them, retain very low levels in drinking water based on EPA standards. Massachusetts is relatively restrictive, but all the evidence is that the EPA is likely to tighten these standards perhaps very significantly, which will put us in a position of needing to remove PFAS from our Lincoln Street well. Fortunately, you and Chuck and Nate have gone ahead and figured out, how a consultant figured out how to do this, so it's feasible, but projected to be expensive. And PFAS levels are typically very high in and near landfills. We measure near hours and we can document that. We suspect the same is true of Hamilton's, which is an issue because Hamilton's landfill is not only very close to our water supply, it turns out it is up gradient in terms of groundwater, meaning whatever's in that landfill is gradually working its way, very slowly, but gradually working its way into our drinking water. We have other medium-term concern, medium-long term, which I mentioned before. Climate change with saltwater intrusion or severe droughts. Useful residential commercial development, because of the way we define our OCD and the presence of a very large landfill over Gordon College in our watershed and these other currently unknown contaminants. So all of this stuff is within our scope, and we're trying to make intelligent and, let's say, cost-effective recommendations about each of them. So here's a menu of what we're likely to recommend, just so that you're all aware what direction we're going in. You can certainly push back on something now that you think is pie in the sky or otherwise unreasonable. The first is to improve the bills. Most people have no idea how much water they use because they get their bill a few months after the quarter for which it measures, and it's in thousands of cubic feet, which don't bear much easy resemblance, even though we learned that a cubic foot is seven and a half gallons. So you could do the arithmetic, but you're still getting, you know, outdated information. So part of the problem, part of the solution there is to replace our currently outdated residential and commercial meters with smart meters. And those, they're smart because they could be more easily read, including by the users, in real time, much the way you read things on an app on your phone. Third, continue the bike replacement and leak detection that brings down our unaccounted water. Fourth, provide monies for contaminant monitoring near the drinking water and there we're thinking particularly of gravelly pond. Quite clean now, although there are, there's measurable amounts of PFAS and other things in it. We'd like it, we'd like to know that it's going to stay that way. Fifth is step up education initiatives, and there's a lot to be said there. We're going to leave it there for tonight because we need to conserve, and particularly the households, the properties that use the largest amounts in the summer need to be helped to give, to find ways to use their property without using so much drinking water outdoors. Sixth, increase rates for the higher-usage tiers. We also probably need to rethink those tiers because the highest tier is almost never achieved by anybody. So it's not functioning as a price signal. But right now, price signals don't discourage people from using. In fact, awareness seems to be relatively low. Those heavy, heavy users, we pointed to in the upper right, that large summer bump and high averages, their bill is below $3,000 a year. Sounds like a lot of money to the rest of towns, you know, $200 to $400 a year for water. This is not sewer, just water. But most of those folks paying $2,000 to $3,000 are not on the sewer system, so there's no additional charge, and it's a very small fraction typically of their property taxes. Seventh, collaborate with Hamilton and probably also with Gordon to figure out how to protect our drinking water in the reservoir and the proximate wells. And eight, in that same vein, revise the water protection districts and add, if possible, conservation restrictions for redefining Zone One into A and B around gravelly ponds as well. Nine, create some ongoing capabilities with town government. Like some of the towns in Massachusetts, we no longer have independent water commissioners, so that task falls to you folks on the select board. And I would doubt if anybody disagrees that you have plenty of other fish to fry. So this is not a high priority. You're typically revising rates once a year, usually kind of pro forma, a three percent increase, and, you know, grappling with fires when they erupt, like the threat PFAS in the Lincoln Street well. Tenth, seriously consider some dramatic reconfiguration of our supply system. And we'll have more to say about this, but it comes down to a question of whether it makes more sense to spend a lot of money to treat the water in Lincoln Street well or essentially to close the Lincoln Street well and make sure that we have plenty of cleaner water over the long term from our primary source out of gravelly and round ponds. And we're working hard to run the numbers, figure out the costs, and give you something you can really sink your teeth into in a month or six weeks from now. And eleven, utilize a ten-year plan, which we will give you a draft of with regular reporting. And I have to say Chuck Dam's reaction was perfect. He said, number one, it shouldn't be ten years, it should be ten, twenty-five, and fifty years. And number two, make sure you provide resources for the reporting because he and his folks are obviously stretched. That's got to be the quickest drink from a fire hose. Sorry about that metaphor, but that's what this is. Kathy?
I love this chart. Thank you very much. And I just think these recommendations are terrific. When you guys come back to us, I guess, in a four-to-six-week timeframe, if I'm hearing you correctly, it would be really helpful if the final recommendations that you have for the board are prioritized. So what will give us the biggest bang for the buck? That should be number one. So even if you have to use some type of tier, it would be really helpful to have your final recommendations be prioritized, but these are great. Thank you.
Excellent suggestion. We'll do that, and we'll also, in my experience, it helps to try to put them on two dimensions. One is how urgent is it, and the other is how expensive is it?
Yeah, the nine block that you used on Slide 11 is a great way to show that or a four-block, however you choose to do it, that's great. Absolutely.
Done that plenty of times. Any other comments before we close out here?
I have one, and the question is, do we have any idea the impact of pools? On water use?
Sweating pools?
Oh, swimming pools. No, we haven't measured that directly, although we're trying to do some person-to-person outreach for some of the folks that are the heaviest users, just to find out, you know, how did they approach it today, and where are they in terms of caring about this or interest in doing something about it? So that would include finding out, you know, how much of it is sprayed on landscape and how much of it is used elsewhere. Chuck Dam also believes there's a possibility that some of it is lost on property. Some of these property owners have built on very historic sites which had their own water supply systems coming off of the town mains, and they may be even older than the town mains.
I will say that in general, these recommendations kind of fall into two buckets. The first one, and I think it's the most important one, is a focus on conservation, and several of these are really conservation types of initiatives. But if we can get our water consumption level down, it gives us more flexibility in the future to decide what to do when problems arise. And the other bucket is, what happens if we've got problems with contaminants? If we've got problems with salinity? If we've got, we've got to reconfigure our water supply? All of that, all of those questions become a little bit more manageable if we can work the angle of reducing our water usage. So as you can see from here, the first six or seven, first six or seven factors here, they're all really focused on trying to get our water usage down, and the rest kind of follow on that. And how things evolve ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, and Chuck has certainly looked at that and has his opinions about how things might be or not be configured and what the choices are. A lot of those choices will be forced by, in part, by how much water we're using at that time. And we're working on, well, he's been working on several different of these aspects up there to try and reduce the amount of water that's coming out of our aquifer.
Good point. I'm going to check here, and yeah, that is the last slide we intended to show, so.
And I might add that, yeah, there's one more thing. The recommendations from 1990, that's not to say they're going to be ignored. As Steve had said, a lot of them are kind of in progress. That wasn't addressed on the probable recommendations, or they might resurface when we look at a ten-year plan or fifteen or twenty-five or whatever. They wind up being on that. But those recommendations, they're in progress, the number of them are, and we expect that they will continue to be.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and we look forward to any other comments you may have after the fact or get a chance to review these.
Greg does.
Well, in looking at the eleven recommendations, I think the one that gives me the most pause would be consideration of giving up a drinking source. I would be very leery of abandoning a permitted source, given the challenges of permitting new sources.
That's an excellent point. And that's one of the kind of weightiest issues. It's not a speed bump, it's a serious implementation issue. So unless we could essentially replace the capacity of the Lincoln Street well with incremental capacity and argue to the state that we are swapping a contaminated supply for an uncontaminated and safer, largely protected supply, I don't think we would come forward even with the recommendation.
I guess I didn't understand that answer.
I'm saying I agree with Greg, but there are two, at least two issues here. One is, will we have adequate capacity if, in fact, the town population grows? Because it might over the next fifty years. So that's important. We can't give up something which currently supplies between 30 and 40 percent of our water in Lincoln Street well, and particularly in the winter, and provides various system benefits like pressure and whatnot that won't be easily duplicated. So there's that. And then there's the regulatory question, as Greg says. If we simply went to the state and said, we want to drill a new well or activate an old well, it would be years and much expense to convince them that the sub-basin can stand that, that we could change our withdrawal limits, et cetera, et cetera.
Especially given our current consumption rates.
You don't look like somebody who needs a lot of water supply. Although, in truth, both the DEP representatives and the EPA representatives on the CREATE team this summer consistently made the point that Manchester needs another supply of water. And they're not worried so much about the effects of climate change on the reservoir and around pond wells, they're worried about Lincoln Street well.
I mean, we don't even have to look, you know, in the distant past to, you know, have some good data points on this stuff. So this past summer, we all know there was a drought. We actually flipped this year. This is kind of news to everybody, but, you know, we're, every year we do an annual statistical report where we account for, you know, where the water is coming from, where it's going. This is the first year since I've been here, and I'd have to look back if it's ever happened before. But we actually pumped more water out of the Lincoln Street well than we did out of gravelly pond, and that's in response to the drought. And we actually had to wait for the recharge of Round Pond well, which supplements gravelly pond, to make sure that we didn't deplete gravelly pond beyond a reasonable amount. And so, you know, when you expand that, you know, looking in the future, you know, more of our water this year came from Lincoln Street than came from gravelly pond. So that's just from a system configuration thing, you know, that was a big deal. We had that redundant source that would help us, you know, manage our water situation in a time of drought. So that's right out the back. The other thing that, you know, hasn't really, you know, been the focus of the task force because it's not something that, you know, they probably have been very interested in, but the system hydraulics and the distribution system rely heavily on the ability to pump water into the distribution system from the Lincoln Street well. So one of the things that I've mentioned at some of these subgroup meetings and, you know, in emails to some of the people on the task force is that we also have to consider that. It's not just the source water, it's the effect on the distribution system itself. So that's definitely something that needs to be taken into account for all of these.
My recollection is that there is a well somewhere off in the Cedar Swamp area that has been, that was used for supply water to coloster when they had a water problem. We can't use that because we can't get permission.
Yeah, so that well source, whether it was for coloster or whatever, which I think it was, has been abandoned in DDP's eyes, so that's not something that we can just turn on. The other implication for that one is that it's not connected to our distribution system, so that water would have to get somewhere, either to gravelly pond or to the distribution system itself.
But my point is, when you give it up, it's gone.
Well, we have the same problem. We have Round Pond well number one that you're all aware of, but we also have Round Pond well number two that had a permit associated with it, and that permit lasted in the early 2000s. And so again, you know, this summer in drought, we're worried, so we turned off Round Pond well to make sure we didn't deplete that source. It would have been nice to have a Round Pond well number two, you know, further away that on the other side of the pond that we could have pumped in, but we don't have that ability anymore. So when you give these things up, there are definitely, you know, many layers they have to consider.
Many wise and pound foolish to consider not closing the Lincoln Street well rather than treating it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, everything's a balance, and, you know, I'm sure there's a cost benefit associated with them all, but, yeah.
Yes, stay tuned, please.
Any other questions from the board before I go out to the public? Okay, any questions from the public? If so, please raise your hand, and you will be called on. Okay, seeing none. Any comments? Nope, okay. Well, thank you, Steve and Task Force and John. That was really a lot of work, good information, and very eye-opening in terms of our use compared to others per capita.
Thanks.
Thank you. Please, please.
Couldn't have done it without the volunteers and without Chuck and Nate's support.
Well, please express our thanks to everybody. And Chuck, if you'd pass those around as well.
It's been great working with, you know, there's a lot of good, talented people that are doing a lot of work.
Well.
Is the CREATE report available?
I don't think we've seen the actual final. We had a draft, and then we commented on it. So I don't think I've seen a final back of the comments.
When it comes, I'd like to see it.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, wonderful. Thank you again, Steve, very much. And in terms of budget, any budget requests, Greg? Are they aware of a timeframe?
Yeah, so, so Steve, I don't know if you have a cent of a dollar amount at this point and considering what is left in the initial allocation.
We don't have a good one, Greg. The monitoring wells, we, we do have a proposal in hand. We have several proposals in hand, actually. And that, I think that's, that's the one we're looking most closely at at the present to make sure that, you know, we get that to you in the next few weeks for inclusion in your discussions about budget for next year. We may also have some carryover from the $80,000 budget for this fiscal year. So we need to make sure we, we don't discount that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Pine Street Traffic Calming Discussion. Take it away, Chuck.
I'm ready to run this one. Well, I guess, you know, I did have an opportunity to trade some emails with Ann, and I've discussed it with Greg. And I went back and watched the original Pine Street discussion that you guys had. Apologize, I wasn't on for that one. But I guess, you know, there's certainly alternatives, and there's ways that we can improve on the, you know, traffic calming. As I mentioned to Ann today and Greg previously, we do have a traffic calming policy in town. And so I would like to see us see that through to the end in terms of process and coming to an agreement on what projects need to be implemented. The reason I say that is that I'm very cautious and nervous that jumping to any solution that one person, whether it be me or anybody on the board or otherwise, think is the right alternative, that just sets us up for failure down the road on other streets and other areas where people have perceived traffic problem, where there may or may not be one. So that's, that's why we put in the traffic calming policy. And so I think that, you know, we can realistically say, you know, we, we have collected some data. We have looked at it. I do agree that, you know, it might not be, you know, the onus on one particular resident to bring forward a project, but, you know, I do think that we need to, you know, go back to the voters at some point and, you know, make sure that they are in support of whatever the recommendations are. So I guess that's where I would start the discussion. You know, I did try and get some more data on, you know, just for background. So I was able to talk to Chief Fitzgerald, and he was able to give me the, you know, number of accidents over the past several years. So in the past 23 years, there's been an average of about five accidents per year. But if you look at the past 10 years, it's actually only been 24 accidents, which is about 2.4 a year. And in the past five years, there's been seven. So that's about 1.2 accidents per year. So that would make you think that the, you know, the accident rate has gone down, which would not be indicative of increased speeds necessarily. So I guess I just say that to set the stage that sometimes our perception is not always reality. That's why we want to get the traffic studies, the, you know, speed data that we get from the police recorders, as well as, you know, we have other methods. I will say that, you know, when looking at Pine Street itself, there's a couple of other things that are right down the pipe. As everybody knows, we're looking at the landfill field project. We've committed to making the sidewalk extend from, you know, the, where it ends on Upper Pine, above Pleasant Street, all the way to the field. At there, we'll have a pedestrian crossing, improved pedestrian-activated crossing. We'll also, as part of this safe zone grant or whatever it was, we're able to also do pedestrian-activated improvements at the intersection of Pine and Pleasant. So tho- those things are all going to be done. So that's to say that, you know, I don't know that any one of those will change any perceptions or, you know, calm traffic necessarily, but, you know, things will change. We also just implemented the speed restrictions from Pleasant down to Woodhull, which, you know, was basically rescinding the previous safety zone 20 mile per hour and making it 25. So I guess, you know, I would like to see how that plays out in terms of, you know, does it have any effect on speed? Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. But, so there's things that we need to do there. We also have, the police have a speed feedback trailer. And I don't know about you guys, but, you know, when I come into town, I come into Pine Street every day. I come on School Street every day. And, you know, you get numb to the ones that are kind of static and there. But I do think when I, you know, when they put the speed feedbacks out on the trailer on Pleasant Street, and I saw it at the corner of Woodhull, I, you know, you get the flash, the, oh my God, I'm going fast. So it does have an, those do have an effect on speed. So I'd like to see us put that out, maybe not right now, still response, you know, any given day, but certainly in early spring, you know, we could put those out. And at the same time, we could also put the, you know, the traffic collection devices out to get an indication of, you know, are people slowing down? And, you know, does it have any lasting effect? So maybe, you know, we do it a month after the trailer's there, then we do it, you know, three months after the trailer's there, something like that. And that's all kind of laid out in our traffic calming policy that we agreed to a couple of years. So that's what I look at in terms of the short term. Longer term, we do have a, you know, we're going to be closing Central Street, so Pine Street will be on a detour. So anyway, I guess I've thought a lot about it. You know, we've also been looking at School Street, because we just finished the water main work last year, so we're going to be repaving that early spring. And we looked at, you know, what can we do? You know, I didn't need the select board to ask me. I went and, you know, tried to consider what improvements could we make when we repave all of School Street? That would help, you know, because we get complaints about School Street just as much as I've got complaints about Pine Street. And what would be the ability for, you know, us to add a bike lane? Or to add, you know, improve crossings at, you know, the different side streets going to Vine or, you know, Brook or wherever? And, you know, the, the issue that we had there is that it's an irregular width all the way up. So you can't have a consistent street diet any of the way. It, it all changes. And then we have the parking influences, which we also have in Pine Street. So, you know, I'm not a town planner, but if I were, you know, 100, 350 years ago, I would have considered, you know, more of a grid-style layout that would have been, you know, conducive to traffic going up and down the road. But, you know, we don't have that. We have a nice seaside community that, you know, relied more probably on boats and horses than they did on, you know, cars and vehicles. So, so this is not an uncommon problem for any of Manchester, but, you know, it's something that, you know, we have all. I actually talked to our consultant on the School Street one in particular, and believe it or not, they actually didn't recommend a bike lane at all. Because even if you, even if in, I told them, if the option were on the table, you know, where would we add a bike? You know, we can take back some sidewalks, we could, you know, everything's, you know, fair game. And they said, because of where the utility poles are, on the, on the right side if you're going out of town, it's too close, and that that's actually more dangerous for a cyclist than, you know, not having a bike lane at all and just making a shero in the middle of the, of the roadway. So, you know, again, I do try and be proactive and look at these things, and I just haven't seen, you know, there's certainly no silver bullet, and there's always drawbacks, you know, gives and takes. You know, Nate and I talked a lot with the DIPS committee about, you know, downtown improvements. And, you know, we have the same problems down there. You know, parking is at a premium. Nobody wants to give up the, you know, the right-of-way. You know, the, the street, the buildings are right on top of the sidewalks. So there's, there's no room to, you know, implement any of these things. So then I looked at the complete streets, you know, projects from years ago. And actually, when I talked to Greg before I reviewed the complete streets concepts, there actually is a project number eight in the complete streets, is for a shared-use path on Pine Street. And that's what I had considered, you know, as a long-term solution could be done on Pine Street to help, you know, give your cyclists a place to go. So that was at least considered then to be, you know, a reasonable solution for, you know, bike lanes. So I guess, you know, that, that's other than that. The price tag carried in the complete streets was almost a million dollars. I thought, you know, a couple hundred thousand when I talked to Greg. In complete streets, it was over, or around a million. So that's obviously not in the short term. So I did look at delineator posts, and, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend bollocks because they're more of a physical solution that doesn't give. And so you don't necessarily want to add that. But I understand what you were, what you were trying to get at. But, so delineator posts are the ones that you can kind of knock down, and you can put them back up. I was told by the same consultant that I consulted with on School Street that, you know, expect 40% of those to be replaced in the first year. And it gets better over time, but there are always going to be a maintenance issue. So that's, you know, not something that I hold near and dear in my heart, but.
Can those come out for plowing, or is that a permanent?
So it depends, there, there's different styles. So you can, you can get whatever you want, basically. The, the ones I was looking at that are like 50 bucks a pop are the delineator posts, and they have like adhesive that just sticks on the asphalt. It's like a, you know, another asphalt butyl material that, you know, they stick to. But again, they get knocked over, you know, then somebody has to put them back up. Or, you know, we do have the pedestrian crossing, you know, like the turtle with the, you know, stop sign that we put on some of the crossings. Those become targets, definitely become targets. So, you know, that's, not to say we shouldn't do it, it's just to say like, that's the reality of if we put them in.
Are they removable in the winter?
Yeah, so they, they are adhesive, so you can take them off, but then, you know, you're paying for another $10 adhesive for each one.
Oh.
And then the other thing that, you know, might not be, you know, obvious when you're just thinking, you know, can we just put some delineator posts out? But if you go the entire length of Pine Street, you know, maybe not quite to the, you know, on-off ramp, but, you know, say up to the field certainly, and, you know, the state pit to, you know, get kind of right out of there. You know, you're talking over a mile, and they recommend them every 20 feet. So, you know, the, the price tag, even at 50 bucks a pop on both sides of the road, you know, that, you're looking at a $40,000 price tag off the bat, and that 40% that need to be replaced in year one, and then you have the $10, you know, adhesive strip, you know, after the fact. So, you know, we can, we can still do it, but I wouldn't say that's something that we have in our, you know, in our near-term budget. So, you know, what I've, what I've said to other people when we're looking at, you know, any traffic car around town is like, the first thing we should probably do is pilot it. So, you know, that's, that usually comes out of paint, which, you know, some people pay attention to, some people don't. I do think there's a community outreach aspect and education aspect, and then there's long-term planning. So, you know, when I was in Salem, we had, you know, we actually had a bike plan. I left before it was completed, but I actually went on and looked at it online. I think I'll forward it to Greg and Debbie to forward to you guys, but it's pretty impressive, like the, the things that they consider when they put together a real bike plan in terms of desire lines and, you know, where people need to go. And then what level of bike accommodation do you need? So there's actual, you know, engineering behind, you know, on your, you don't need a, you know, full protected bike lane on Pine Street because the average daily traffic is low enough where, you know, a cyclist should be comfortable just riding in the lane with, you know, proper signage and paint and stuff. So like, there's, there's stuff that they look at that, you know, isn't something that's, you know, necessarily my wheelhouse or something. But, so I do think that there is merit, and I know the Bike and Ped Committee would be, you know, love to have a full bike land, and then that gives us some continuity throughout town. So we're not putting, you know, the wrong of bike accommodation on Pine Street only to see it, you know, you know, the people on School Street want the same thing, and, you know, so we repeat it over there, and it's just, it's not the right solution, you know? So it, you know, gives a more of a full town-wide perspective of where people want to go, how they want to get there, and how we can get there safely. Because the last thing I want to do is put a bike path for the sake of putting a bike path, and then it becoming, you know, where we have 1.2 accidents a year, having it become, you know, something worse. So I, I do think we need to be careful about, you know, rushing into some of these conclusions before we evaluate all the information. And I, so I think if we stick to the traffic calming policy, we will get there. So I just ask that people be patient, people participate, and we will get there. But, so that's where I'm, where I am on traffic calming. I'm happy to answer any questions or come up with alternative solutions.
Questions from the board, John?
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple of questions. I know that the speeds on Pine Street, they were changed. They went from 20 to 25, I guess, is that correct, Chief?
20 and 25, yeah.
Right, and were we gonna, and then we were going to monitor the speeds there? And is that going to be, I don't think that's happened yet.
No, it's currently out there now.
Was it out there now?
We, we just changed them, I think, last week.
Uh, the, the speeds.
The speed's back to 25, yeah.
Yes, it's up to 25, but is there monitoring to see if that makes a difference in terms of the average speed or median speed?
That's the plan, yeah.
But that hasn't happened?
Okay, that, that was my question. That'll happen, well, I don't know.
Well, I, I asked the accountant to put out for seven, 10 days.
Okay, so that's on your.
So we're collecting right now, but we're not.
So it's on the radar.
It's on the radar, but you haven't got a machine out there or whatever the, this moment.
It should have went out today.
Oh, okay, all right, because I hadn't seen any.
No, you won't see it, it's on the pole.
Well, it's on a pole, okay, all right.
It's a box, a gray box on the pole.
Okay. And, and I also have a question about School Street. That's going to get paved. Pavement facilitates speed, we all know that, new pavement. Do we have a, a, a history of speeds, a recent history of speeds on school?
I'm sure we do, I think we do, yeah. I'd have to look on the website, it's on our website, I'd have to look.
Okay, I'd be interested in that and seeing how new pavement with new lines, however they're going to be put together, but I, I think that's something that we need to.
Yeah, so part of that, like I said, I did, I did have a consultant look at some of the intersection that, you know, I knew would be, you know, top of mind. And so there are, we do have the ability to square some things off and make crossings more visible. Like I said, we don't have room for bike accommodations, but we will be putting in sherros. And that's something that I've been trying to get to for a while, and we haven't been good about it. But when we paint the long lines, you know, pretty much annually, we paint the crosswalks annually, what we haven't done is paint sherros. And, you know, I think that's a good first step. And, you know, when I first got to town, you know, we were talking about putting sherros in. So I believe, nobody, nobody's ever seen a shero. There's no sign that says, you know, share the road with bikes, like, all of that stuff just doesn't exist. And so it's hard to start at a, you know, at a, you know, protected bike lane when nobody even knows what a shero is, you know? I actually wrote down the term "bike lash." So there is a thing called "bike lash," where, you know, if you haven't seen anything, and then all of a sudden, you're basically, as a motorist, you're forced to share the road with a bicycle, you know, people start to resent that a little bit. So I think we need to work on that education aspect in the short term, for sure. And I, I do want to say, like, I do, I did talk, I did sit down with Bike and Ped and got their input in the interim, you know, Terry and Dana and, you know, other people on the committee. And, you know, I think, I think they understand that, and I, I do think they do a lot to, you know, they definitely do the bike rodeos and, you know, all that other stuff. But they seem to garner, and, you know, I think they know this, that they get, they get the advocates. They don't get, you know, your general, you know, citizen or, you know, commuter resident that's not an advocate. So I think there's an outreach that needs to be done with just residents.
Okay, so kind of the bottom line for all of this is, there's still more information that has to be collected out in the field from people, as well as what the various choices are. And you laid out a bunch of different choices with regard to bicycles. And, I mean, you also mentioned, or I guess was mentioned in Greg's note to us, this culvert situation is a big deal, whatever is going to happen.
Yeah.
And are you kind of reticent to saying, I, I want to see that happen before I start to, start, start to do things? Because we may have problems when we're rerouting big volumes of traffic.
Yeah, so that, you know, that's, that's certainly, I'm, I am very nervous that we will take, you know, when we give the contractor a full rein of that culvert, there's only one detour in town, and it's up Pine Street. And then you either get to pick if you're going down Pleasant, which, you know, most traffic will go down Pleasant. However, we'll probably put in a trucking solution to make trucks go all the way up to 128 because we don't want to have increased truck traffic specifically on Pleasant. So I am nervous that we will have like a legitimate rush hour. So it'll be congestion, not, you know, we calm the traffic, so we have slower traffic. It'll be congestion, which means, you know, idling or, you know, lines of cars on a otherwise residential street. lines of cars on a otherwise residential street. Um, you know, certainly at rush hour time, you know, peak times, but even just on regular, you know, doing regular business. Certainly, we already have a rush hour once you get to the intersection of School and Pa- uh, School and Pleasant where, you know, for, for school. Um, so, yeah, I am, I am a little nervous that, um, you're going to say, where did all these trucks come from?
Good.
Anne?
Um, I, two, my two concerns. One is we're adding a practice field, which is going to attract younger kids. And, um, it would be good if parents felt safe letting their younger kids ride a bike out there because it's a long walk. Um, rather than that, than having every single kid driven in a car, dropped off, and then picked up again. Um, and that, that making sure that, that we factor into our plans, not just the existing situation, but what's going to happen when that field becomes available? And trying to project so that we can make it safe for them when the field opens.
So like I said, at a minimum, we will be doing the sidewalk, um, at a, at a pedestrian crossing, so that gets people out there.
I'm kind of fickle about kids riding on a sidewalk that's also being used for.
And so, and I, there is a reasonable accommodation from, especially from Pleasant Street up to, um, the field, uh, where we, we could use the fog line, uh, you know, from the fog line into the sidewalk curb and continue that all the way up with the existing sidewalk. And then we could, um, add the sharrows, uh, so it's, you know, a striped bike lane, uh, from the fog line to the curb.
Okay.
Um, so that, that's reasonable and, you know, a good place to start. Um, you know, the, those delineator posts are not meant to be protective, they're only meant to delineate. Um, so, you know, I wouldn't want to give a false sense of security there. Uh, but, um, we could, we could certainly, I, that makes me feel a lot better doing that, you know, calling that a pilot, reaching out, you know, people are gonna see the field construction, they're gonna see that it's different. And so going from Pleasant to the field seems like a good place for a pilot program or to get people more familiar. Starting with that level before we get to the entire mile and a half of Pine Street seems reasonable to me.
What? I've never heard the term share all before, what is it?
So that, that's the paint, uh, that's basically a, you know, your, um, stick figure bike cyclist with an arrow, uh, which is to delineate that, you know, bikes are supposed to be here. And that's the idea is that you're letting the motorists know that if you see a bike in your lane, it's supposed to be there. You're supposed to share, share the road, share, share. Uh, and so that's the, that's the accommodation that you kind of start with. And then you can go to bike lanes or delineated bike lanes or shared use paths, stuff like that. And so the fact that you didn't know what it was kind of reinforces my thought that, you know, if people just start seeing cyclists without knowing these things, that, you know, there's an education factor there. Where, you know, otherwise there's, there's no accommodations in town.
The, I'm also somewhat concerned about when, when the town was coming half. Um, and we have a big wide road. Are people going to get bored or annoyed and, and snake in and out because the road is so wide?
I, I don't think so.
Or, or kind of on the, on the curb?
During, during construction itself, it, it will be marked as a detour. So there'll be construction barrels and stuff like that delineating, you know, telling you where to go and that you're still more or less in the construction zone, even though the construction is on Central Street.
Okay, so there'll be, there'll be lots of stuff on Pine Street to narrow it effectively.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll have message boards out, you know, there'll be, there'll be a whole traffic management plan that the contractor has to put out for the entirety of the project.
And the entirety of the project is not just Central Street to Union Street?
Yep.
Okay. That's moving here. Those are my concerns and you don't have to take the first suggestion that I offer. But I do like, I do like to hear what you're thinking about.
Yep. A lack of thought.
Kathy?
Yeah, a couple of things, um, I just wanted to follow up on what Anne said. Uh, I think there's, just Chuck, for, for your information, there were two main reasons why we embarked upon these conversations. Uh, one was the, um, you know, feedback we had been getting from residents as to the speed. Um, and I think that conversation was in early September. Uh, and then to Anne's point, the second reason we engaged in these conversations um, was due to the Pine Street field and there were conversations happening at planning board meetings. And we wanted to bring those conversations from the planning board meetings into the select board because this is where they should be happening. So just, just for your background there. Um, a couple of things, we've heard a lot of good information, um, today. And one idea I have not heard yet, I was wondering if you looked at it, but I was, I, uh, thought of it when you mentioned paint. Have you looked into the three D crosswalks? Painting three D crosswalks?
I ha- I have not looked at them for the purposes of Pine Street, but they have been something that, you know, I've, I've shared pictures with people in the past of, you know, could we do this? I've gone and looked at the ones in, I think they're in Medford.
Yeah, they're in Medford.
It's pretty, pretty interesting. Uh, but I haven't done it.
So I guess if you're considering paint as a short-term solution, uh, when you're redoing School Street or whatever, um, I would ask you to consider those, um, as, as part of your analysis. Because you're right, paint is a good first step and, uh, they certainly are visually, um, uh, attention grabbing and they, they do tend to cause people to slow down. So it would be good to take a look at it. Um, second, um, I think what, I don't want to leave this conversation without clear next steps. So you mentioned that we have a traffic calming policy and you want to follow that policy. I think that's perfectly fine, but I would like to see a chart which outlines what those steps are and when they're going to happen.
Yep.
So by when can you come back to us with a clear articulation of how you would execute a traffic calming plan?
Yeah, so I think I mentioned, uh, already, you know, we're, I forget the number of steps, but there's, I think, ten or eleven. And my email today when I was looking at this with Anne was, we're at step four. Um, so step four is basically that we've collected the initial data, we've looked at the work, uh, looked at the speeds, looked at, you know, potential solutions. There's a stage one traffic calming, that's where we're at right now, which is we will implement, you know, signage, education. So that's where the traffic.
I'm sorry, just for clarity, not looking for you to regurgitate it now here. Um, but just by when can, because I don't think, you know, all of the citizens that we may have spoken to who, you know, uh, asked about these traffic calming measures on Pine Street, um,
Yep.
everybody may not be on the same page. So I just think it would be really helpful if we could get a chart, what are the steps and when are they going to happen? And I, I don't need to know what the steps are right now, but could you tell us by when you can come back to us with that chart as an example?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can get you an email, you know, tonight, but definitely tomorrow that says, you know, like I said, we've thought about it. I, I know where we're at in the po- in the, you know, in the timeline. Um, the, the, the biggest, um, milestone from here is in three to four months, we take the, we get more data. Um, so we, we implement these things over the next three to four months. And then we get more data and then we evaluate that data exa- against the initial data. And then, uh, if it warrants physical changes, which are the shared use path and whatever, then we all have a discussion, we, uh, solicit the meeting with the neighbors and we tell them when we're going to do that, but that is contingent upon funding. Because as I said, if we do make physical changes, that's real money, not paint.
Right, good point that you mentioned that Chuck, and that's really a great reason for why I'm asking for the timeline.
Yep.
Aside from the fact that I'm just big on timelines in general, uh, we're having budget discussions. So if we, if there are any, um, funding, uh, barriers or that we may need to overcome, it would be helpful to align those conversations with our budget planning. Um, so another reason for, you know, my personal sense of urgency around getting that timeline that, that you say you, you have, um, so that would be great, thank you.
I'll have it to you tomorrow.
Okay, so, um, we'll need to find a time to discuss this in a meeting at some point. So we don't have to decide that right at this moment.
Right, we may want to add it to our action list as a suggestion.
Yep, well, we're going to get the email tomorrow, so, um, just we can continue with this, but as opposed to traffic calming on Pine Street alone, you can just refer to it as traffic calming.
Right.
And go from there.
Sounds good.
Okay, so, to that end, we'll get the email tomorrow. Um, our next two meetings, it's beginning to look like the sixth is going to be fairly busy. However, if we're talking about budget items, do we need to do it, uh, revisit this traffic calming earlier than the twenty-first?
Before we, Chuck, I said, we're at least a year.
I think you're, you're.
Okay, good. All righty. Okay, so we will tentatively put it for the twenty-first of February and see where we go from there. Um, I wanted to ask, one of the interesting ideas brought up, or so I thought, was taking what is a very large road um, and doing some reconfiguration. Is, is, does that make sense at all? I mean, I, I know there are a couple time, one time a year, Fourth of July, when there's parking all up and down um, beyond Pleasant Street towards the highway. But is that something that makes any sense?
Well, so if we, if we do implement a year from now, uh, a shared use path, that will basically take the travel lanes and push them towards the northbound side and take over the existing sidewalk, the remaining shoulder area, as well as the green strip that, you know, is only sometimes green, uh, and making that a shared use path, which is a ten to twelve foot wide, you know, basically, shared use means shared pedestrian ad bicycle. Um, and that could be, you know, we could also have a strip, you know, typically it's just a curb, but you could also do some sort of, you know, planting, you know, whether it's trees or stuff like that along the edge of the shared use path to delineate that from the roadway. So motorists over here, shared use path over there. Um, that, that's what was the concept in the complete streets. That, so that is certainly on the table, but that is, you know, has a price tag.
Um, any more questions from the board? Okay, um, anybody in the public wish to ask a question? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Anytime.
Anytime, you want to come back next meeting?
Be back Thursday for DPW ThinkCon project.
Okay. Boy, I wish we could do that all at one, you know, now we're, okay. Thank you, Chuck, very much.
Thank you.
Next up, yes, very much, and, um, I just want to say we're very fortunate to have you Nate and the crew, the people we have, um, in town in DPW. You all really do a remarkable job and I don't think many people are aware of the levels of expertise and knowledge that you and Nate bring, um.
Appreciate that, but we'll sign up for it, so.
Well, it is, but thank you, no, it's.
We don't always get news.
Yeah.
And it's nice when you do.
So, thank you, Chuck.
Have a good night.
You too, all right, next up we have MBTA. Chief, did you, were you here for the, the traffic calming or?
I'm here for dispatch.
Oh, yeah, okay, we're getting there, sorry, we're a little, little bit behind. But, um, the MBTA discussion.
So, you had a joint meeting last, uh, last week with planning board. Um, and, uh, as you know, um, MBTA zoning is part of the new state law that is mandating towns with commuter rail to, um, consider a new zoning that would allow by right multi-use housing. I won't go into all those details, but that's, that's the quick one set recap. And, and so, um, staff had put together a, a proposal that was presented at that joint meeting. Um, the, uh, part of that proposal was submitting an, uh, the action plan form to the state, which is due by the end of this month. And, um, that was.
Was it sent out?
So that was reviewed at, at last week's meeting. Um, planning board officially signed off on it, but you wanted to take another crack at it. Um, so that's what's before you tonight to see what additional comments you might have, um, on that before, um, you would ideally vote tonight to allow that to be submitted. Um, so that's, that's part one of what is needed tonight. Um, and then part two is just further discussion, um, on the task force and how best to structure that. Again, uh, staff proposal was, was it to be a, um, a, a task force that would be headed up jointly by the planning board and the, and the select board? Uh, one or two members of those two boards each, plus representatives from various other boards and committees, uh, possibly, uh, additional at-large positions as well. Uh, again, at the, at the joint meeting, um, discussion, the, the planning board, that was the majority present to be in favor of that. Uh, there's been, uh, some questioning about that and some concerns about that structure from a couple of the planning board members. Um, but it would appear that the majority are in favor of that, that structure. Uh, so further discussing, uh, that structure tonight from your perspective would be helpful. And that's goal number two. So it probably makes sense to first talk about the, uh, the action plans submitted. So there was, uh, as you know, it's, it's a fillable form, uh, that was difficult to get you a, a copy of directly with the typed in version, and so we had some handwriting in, but Anne graciously took some time and converted it, uh, and typed it in. So, again, the question is what additional comments might you have on any of those sections? Before we, uh, before you decide that it's, it's good to go?
My one question is, I couldn't read the word, um, in the section about what existing plans do we have? Where she says, um, that we have a master plan, and we have the housing production plan, they something or other. And I don't know what that word is.
Yeah, I think, uh, I don't remember the exact word, but it was basically saying that both the master, both our master plan and our housing production plan uh, advocate for more diversity in housing.
And as long as they're advocating or proposing, but they don't produce, that's, that's why I want to be.
Yep.
And, and several, in several places on the form, um, they ask if we want to, um, add further information that doesn't fit on there. Do we actually want to send them a copy of our master plan and our housing production plan to demonstrate that we in fact are working? Or perhaps do we want to send something that describes what the Affordable Housing Trust is doing? I, I, that, that form is very small and if you have to fill it out by hand, there's not much room. And it would be, I think it would be good to get more information to them. more information to them.
Yeah, we'll need to work with Betsy to see, um, if the state is looking for that kind of additional detail. I certainly, we can certainly provide it.
The form says attach other documents here, so.
So we can do that.
Suggested. Maybe the, maybe, um, charter for the Affordable Housing Trust. And some description of what was done with our house rent.
Good ideas. Kathy?
Nothing further to add, I thought Greg's additions were very good, and, um, I think it's in good shape.
Done. Um, I just might have one thing on the Historic District Commission, which we spoke about a little bit, I think, at the last meeting.
As being on the task force.
Of course, the Historic District, well, I mean, they could be on the task force, I don't know that that, maybe that was brought up, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think.
A representative on that.
Yeah.
But with regard to how that would be zoned or be applicable here, obviously, there are certain restrictions there, but one of them is not converting to a, you know, a three-unit structure, you can do that. But in terms of any change of appearance from a, from a public way, that's going to be subject to site plan review. And I know that these things, the, any, any structure here is subject to site plan review. But I think it would be good for them to comment that site plan review with regard to historic district requirements, is that an acceptable site plan consideration? Because I, I saw on the copy that they had provided, yeah, site plan, but you got to be reasonable.
Right.
I look at that as being reasonable.
Yes, as long as it's being universally applied. In other words.
For the district, yes.
Yeah, you're not only applying the stricter standards for multi-housing versus a single family, as long as you're applying the same standards to both, you're okay. You can't, you can't deny the project, but you can condition it.
Yes.
So that it complies with your.
The, the district's.
Requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
One, one aspect of the Historic District is if you put a new building between two buildings, it has to be taller than the shorter and shorter than the taller.
Is that right? I mean, I, I kind of live with these guidelines, I've.
Yeah, I, I.
Within the, within the, uh.
So that, whether that's.
Okay, that hasn't happened in quite some time.
No.
Maybe.
Maybe ever.
Ever, yeah.
But I think if we're pushing to get more housing in that area, if the state is pushing us to get more housing.
That's what I'm saying.
That's a pretty thickly settled area, there aren't too many places you're going to build. But I think something like that would certainly come up within site plan review.
Whether you're building new or.
Converting.
Well, that becomes an issue within the district. You can't necessarily do that as being visible from a public way. You can expand in the, in the back, but not, uh, not from a street perspective.
What do we want, do we want to see this again? Or do we want to just assume that Betsy will do what we want and just approve it now?
So we need to submit by the 31st. So if you want to see it again, you'll need to meet again.
Which we don't have, our next meeting is the 6th of February.
Yeah, but there's a, this is one of those three Monday months.
Very true, yeah. However, isn't there a Planning Board meeting that night, I think?
On the 30th?
On the, yeah.
I don't think so, I thought there were meetings.
I think they talked about possibly having a meeting, they said question.
Oh, okay.
So there is a question of a me, Planning Board meeting. However, if we wanted to jump onto their agenda and be just in the very beginning and, and.
What, what date is that?
That's the.
30th?
30th, Monday, the 30th, or are they, are they?
That would give them a second chance to look at it as well, if that's the way that was working.
Well, the.
They've already approved it.
Right.
Okay.
Is there a problem with their approving it and then changing?
I think once it's been approved, we should probably just maybe have our own, they've, they're done.
Oh, okay, there's one application.
They've approved from their perspective, so we just need to do ours. We don't necessarily have to.
We don't have to reconcile there too?
With them, we don't have to meet with them, is what I'm saying. I just suggested it, but we don't need to.
I mean, the, yeah, if, if you are making some drastic change to alter sort of the intent, I would feel differently, but what you've suggested is really just some further elaboration of what was already discussed. So I'm pretty comfortable with, you know, that being consistent with what they approved.
If I can make a suggestion, I, um, I, I think this plan that's requested by or required by January 31st is sufficiently high level that personally I'm comfortable approving it tonight. My only concern about waiting till January 30th, quite honestly, is, you know, we get some bad storm that weekend, you know, we started to get snow all of a sudden, we get some bad storm that weekend, that's kind of close to the due date, so, um, I, I personally feel more comfortable if everyone's comfortable with it the way it is, just kind of checking the box and getting it approved and letting Betsy file it.
I, I'm kind of in a, in, in agreement with Kathy, because this is a high-level thing. We will have the opportunity to hit them with whatever we want to hit them with.
Yeah, you're not locking yourself out.
This is not obligating us, I, I agree, so.
This does seem like a waste of everybody's time to come back just for this.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I do recommend elsewhere in my memo to you that we have a special meeting, that's specifically on the governance project.
Yeah.
Yes.
But that's a different topic.
No. Yeah, that's, okay, um, with that said, um, do you need a?
I, I move that, that we authorize the interim town planner to submit the application for the MBTA zoning, um, project.
Has amended?
No.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded John Round, roll call vote, Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes, thank you very much. Okay, so next up, we have the, uh, discussion of, can we flip-flop and do dispatch community outreach first? So that we can, let Chief go home? Okay.
So just before you go, I didn't know if you had any other further discussion or comments about the task force or.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Again, we don't have to do a deep dive, but I just, if you have particular guidance or suggestions, that's, that's helpful, but we can, we'll, we'll need to move it along in, in February for sure.
No.
So I, I talked about, you know, representatives from Select Board, Planning Board, Finance Committee, the Downtown Improvement Committee, ZBA, HDC could be on there. I don't want a too big of a group to make it unwieldy.
That is big.
It's, it's, you know, so maybe it's one, one member from the Planning Board or one member from the Select Board, or the two each.
And then, um.
I'd be in favor of, uh, one Select Board but two Planning Board members. I think this is a Planning Board-driven activity primarily, so I'd, I think two from the Planning Board and one each from the Select Board, Finance, DIP, ZBA, and HDC, is that seven?
Two, three, four, five, six, uh, and at-large.
Oh, yeah, we've got at-large.
I'm going to interrupt, are, are you the gentleman with the.
Oh, he, this is my husband who's brought my keys in, I forgot my keys.
I should have recognized.
Excuse me, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're all done?
Oh, gosh, no, thank you.
Wishful thinking.
Better than to ask that.
I wish.
No, that was, uh, anyway, there we go, thank you. I should have introduced you all, that was my husband.
I, I.
Husband is everybody.
I should have recognized.
Oh, no.
I apologize.
And two at-large, so that makes nine.
So if we do, that's two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Two Planning Board, one Select Board, two at-large, one FinCom, one ZBA, one Historic District.
Uh, DIP?
What did somebody say? Yes, DIP, yep.
What is the charge of this task force?
Well, there you go.
So the charge would be to, um, assess whether or not the town should proceed with complying with MBTA zoning. I tried to do it in one sentence, that's what I would say, so.
How so are they going about this?
How will they do that? So it, it'll involve collecting a lot of data initially. Again, following that timeline that was presented, uh, at last week's meeting. So that broke it down into basically four stages of data collection, some outreach, community dialogue, brainstorm possible, um, responses if, if we were to go forward, but also looking at what are the ramifications of not complying? And then, if, so there, there needs to be a decision point at some point, are we going to try to comply or not? If decision is to comply, then it would continue on to look at specific, uh, zoning measures that would bring us into compliance.
So.
So if it gets to that stage, that's where the Planning Board really takes over.
Right.
As, um, as, as our, as our zoning development board already.
So the task force, it would exist from now until the end of 2024?
Potentially, it might end sooner, uh, depending on the decisions made and the direction taken.
In other words, if we don't.
I have a question.
Yes, Kathy?
Just a question for Greg, um, where does Betsy say she needs help? She's our town planner, and, um, you know, I guess I'm following up on Ann's question, what's, what's the charge of this task force or proposed task force? Because I, I wouldn't want to get in the way of what our town planner can do with a consultant, I think she was advocating hiring for some technical assistance. So I just, I, I would like to know where she feels she needs help from a task force.
Right, so, so I think, I think she would answer by saying, um, that the task force then provides feedback to the data analysis presentation, um, you know, what, basically asking the questions over, what do you think of this? What do you think of that? What, what are the implications? How do you feel the, the town reacts to the implications of X, Y, and Z? So the task force.
So would Beth, so would she chair that task force?
She could, I, I was thinking more of, of a Planning Board member and/or a Select Board member, or either one or the other, or both as a co-chair. I think that is a more typical rule, uh, structure, where, so the staff would be supporting that chair and, and, and task force and bringing information to it.
Well, the reason for my question is we just saw a great presentation from another task force, and I don't think, I, I mean, the chair is not a member of an elected board, so, um, you know, what, so I, I've got two hats on here, I'm trying to answer, you know, think about the question you asked us, Greg, which is, you know, is this task force what we need? And then I've also got my, um, governance hat on, um, because we haven't set any procedures or, uh, policies in place for what we, what are those questions we should be asking before setting up a, a new committee or a task force? I'm kind of wearing two hats when I, when I ask these questions.
Yeah, so, I mean, typically you, you form a task force because you have a particularly complex, uh, problem or challenge to try to solve. I, I think it's effective to have staff support, uh, a task force or a board or committee, for that matter, uh, and that, that staff brings the information and prepares, uh, proposals, and then it's critiqued and, and sort of troubleshoot through the task force members to provide feedback and, and further guidance. So that, that was sort of my vision of this, how this unfolds. But it's, it's open to discussion.
Just kind of background, um, is there a difference between an elected land use board and a, an appointed land use board?
In terms of their authority and roles, no.
Okay, because, um, the head of the, uh, water resource task force is the head of the, of the CONCOM.
Right, right. But in terms of, so state law allows either an elected planning board or an appointed planning board, and they both have the same duties.
Okay, fine, so it's not the, in this case, both boards who are likely to be chair are elected, but, but, not it.
Now, with, with that, um, is Betsy actually, or the interim town planner, actually on this committee? Is she?
They're not a committee member, they're.
I mean, task force, sorry.
They're, they're task force, they're not a task force member.
Right.
They're, again, staff support.
That's right.
That's how I view it.
Yeah, and I think that's a, a critical distinction.
I wonder vaguely whether the group that makes a recommendation to go forward or not, yes, they have to have some outreach to get to their decision, but having that same group continue after the decision is made, working with more outreach, seems as if you need a different skill set once the decision's made.
If, and it may well morph at that time, right? I mean, in that.
I think you evaluate at that point, you know, that, that's a sort of juncture point, and is it, I think you make that decision when you come to that point.
Right.
Whether or not you want a different group or, or to continue with the same. Or does it, is that the handoff time and the Planning Board then takes it over if it's going forward with, with zoning? Or it may be a point where our recommendation is, you know what, this doesn't, this isn't making sense to proceed, Plan, the Planning Board agrees with that, you as a board agree with that, and we, we take a whole different attack. You know, we, we don't need to do zoning at that point, and, uh, you have a discussion of how, you know, maybe the conclusion is we want to diversify our housing, but not by complying through MBTA zoning, and, and therefore we need another group to focus on a new pathway.
A new pathway to include. Continuing on.
I think we have to evaluate when we get there.
Absolutely.
Know if we can prejudge that right now.
Yep. Any, so, so what we're looking at as our recommendation for the task force is two Planning Board, one Select Board, two at-large, one FinCom, one ZBA.
Do we have a joint, i- if it comes up, could we have one person who represented both of those?
The ZBA and the?
FinCom?
I'm Sarah.
ZBA and FinCom or Z?
Yeah, ZBA and FinCom. Yeah, ZBA and FinCom.
Are you getting it?
Sarah, Sarah would be the obvious choice there, just cause.
Okay.
I guess that's possible.
Yeah, absolutely. Two hats, one person.
Does that mean she gets to vote twice?
Yes.
Just checking.
One, one downtown improvement and one historic district. Okay, so will we put this forward to the next, to the, the planning board?
Right.
Okay, and Ron is on, but who will be, who's going to forward that information then to?
Yeah, I'll work with that too.
Excellent.
So.
Yay.
Bring that before, forward.
Now Ron does have his hand up. Mr. Master Giacomo.
Yes, thank you, Becky. Um, I like the idea of two planning board members. My suggestion also would be someone from the climate, um, committee, the, uh, to maybe be on the committee also, climate change.
Who's on that committee? I don't, do we?
So we don't have a formal committee at this stage. We were, we're in the process of forming that steering group.
Okay.
It's starting to get concerning about the size, but.
Yeah.
Or maybe one of the at-large people.
Yeah, make it one of the at-large, I think.
I think, yeah, okay, that's, all right. Thank you, Ron.
Yeah.
So we look for an at-large person who has background in, um, climate.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Ron? Nothing else. Okay. Um, all right.
Yep.
Set on that one?
Yep.
Okay, now we are going to go to, this is dispatch community outreach. So this is Kathy and Chief.
Yeah, so a combination of outreach, but also an update on where we are with the timeline and staffing. Which has become a, quite a bit more challenging just in the last couple of weeks.
Yes.
Given the number of changes that have occurred. So as I indicated, am I memorable to you? Uh, we, we have been dealing with some changes in staffing. As you know, as part of the joint meeting with the Fin, Finance Committee last week, the department has lost almost all of the reserve officers, much more rapidly than they anticipated due to police reform as, please, uh, since reserves have to be full-time academy trained, they're, they're going ahead and getting full-time jobs. So they, they are leaving fairly quickly as the, the job, job prospects are quite, uh, good out there right now. A lot, a lot of departments are looking for officers. So it's been easy for them to define full-time employment. So reserves have, have always been the major part of our staffing model for, for the dispatch. In addition to the, to the three-time, three full-time dispatchers. And, and so losing them is putting a major crimp on staffing. The chief does, I can let, let the chief speak here. I don't need to speak for you. But he, he does have a, uh, a very strong candidate that we're hoping will say yes to a, a full-time position. And he could provide either himself or like backfilling others who can also provide dispatch. It allows us to continue the dispatch operations in-house. The, the, the good news of everything is that Regional Dispatch continues to make really good progress. They've been working extremely hard and pushing to get things done. And, and they are comfortable taking over full-time dispatch come the first of March, which is, which is earlier than what we had originally outlined on the timeline.
Aren't they? Are they taking it over completely?
It'd be a complete takeover.
Okay, I'm just trying to remember back to the meeting we had the other day.
At first, we thought we were gonna do like a hybrid type of thing.
Right.
Police and fire.
Right.
They feel more comfortable taking.
Wow, that's great. That's excellent.
So we would continue with our, um, dispatch staff.
Yep.
In the, in the March, April, May, June timeframe. In order to make sure, A, that transition goes smoothly, so we, we're not, uh, in case any glitches happen. We don't anticipate those, but it's nice to have plan B. And also to continue the staffing in, in the lobby. And so there's no break in that as we gear up for the next iteration of what that, that'll be. So I just want to be clear, people, or just want to be clear on that point and that people don't have to worry about that aspect of it.
Good.
But anyway, Chief, I, I should just let you.
I think you covered, uh, covered most of it. I just want to reiterate that, that we currently have only three dispatches left and three, three reserves. The three reserves, like I said the other night, are diaries and they can only give us a limited amount of time in that role. So we've worked on a couple of options. We met with the fire chief earlier today. With Greg and I are gonna meet with the dispatchers union next Tuesday at 9:30 to try and work out, uh, the, the, kind of the
Schedule.
How it's gonna look, the scope of it. And, uh, we'll have more of a, uh, I don't know, a final pro, process of final, I'll kind of what that's gonna look like as we move into, in towards, uh, March 1st. But without bringing on a new staff member and, and the patrol union kind of stepping up, it's, we're not gonna be able to sustain what we're doing right now.
So we have worked on a plan B in case, plan A, what we just described, doesn't work. In short form, that means, uh, the fire, firefighters would take over dispatching fires. And police officers would, would step in and dispatch for, for police. So that would be plan B. It's not as desirable. It leaves a lot of holes in coverage on fire and a lot of overtime in, in police. But it, it is a fallback if, if we have to.
So when you say a lot of holes, at the meeting Kathy and the chiefs and I attended with the North Shore 911, I don't recall them mentioning that there would be any holes with the hybrid.
So.
Did you, Todd?
I think what Greg's meaning is, is.
The holes are, are in, uh, fire staffing. So instead of free out all the time.
Okay, all right.
There, there may be times when there are, are, they drop down to two.
Okay.
That's, that's where the hole would be.
All right, cause I was thinking, that's, that's concerning if there are holes in safety.
I shouldn't have, that was a poor choice of words.
Yeah, yeah.
There would be occasions when fire would drop down to, to two, which they had done quite frequently over the past year because of injury and, so it is something that has happened in the past and we, we have.
So in other words, we're not, it is not some horrendous.
Right, we still have coverage.
Safety problem.
The, the ambulance will still run.
Yep.
So.
And, and, and calls will be answered.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
What, how, how does that work? I mean, the, the, we have, we don't have an extra PFAS.
PSA.
PSA, sorry. Thank you.
We have plenty of PFAS.
Unfortunately.
More than we'd like.
Sorry. And all of these P things.
Acronyms.
Yes. Um, so I get on my 911. Who is it who says?
So, so basically what happened, we would continue on answering the 911.
Still, still comes to the police.
Still comes into us. And then, just like we did before, we took over fire dispatch years ago, we would call the fire department, say you have a emergency on, you know, 23rd Street or wherever they are.
And then they take it over from.
They take it over and tone themselves out from that.
Okay, got it.
So, so yes, the, the, the call would still come into one location.
And then, and then we'd transfer it across the street.
Yes, yes, exactly.
So, plan A is to keep everything
Here.
here in a police station.
Yes.
Until the transfer on the first of March. And as of the first of March, everything switches over. And we continue to have people in the dispatch office to pick up, to keep the station live and, and to pick up.
Walkings, I guess.
Oh.
Just, just a backup.
If there were, if there, yeah, just a backup.
It's a backup, yeah, just to make sure that everything's going smoothly.
Yes, okay.
Kathy, you wanna?
So Greg, um.
No, I was just saying, I, go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. Um, so I think we should look at this March 1 start as an opportunity to use the dispatchers that will remain in-house, you know, through, through the end of the second quarter. You know, I, I guess I'm wondering, how are we going to use them most effectively? Uh, I understand this is all happening really fast and we, you know, this is something that we didn't really anticipate. But I think it's an opportunity to try out different approaches to the lobby coverage. I think it's an opportunity to, um, you know, you know, possibly use some of the dispatcher's hours to get ahead of some other tasks like the data conversions or whatever. So I just.
Yes, exactly. That's exactly right.
Challenges are usually opportunities flipped, flipped on their head. So I, I think it, this could be a real way to not only accelerate the, um, initial call-taking, but perhaps pull in the entire effort. You know, or at least get some, some tasks done earlier. So just a thought.
Yes, yeah, that we, we've, we've started to think about that. So it's a good point.
Well, that, that was the role that they were going to play during the transfer anyway. The difference here is that there aren't going to be telephone responsibilities that will be coming in however often they come during the day. Those interruptions, if I want to say, if you're dealing with data.
Right.
You know, tons of data work, that's just not going to be happening because those calls are going to Middleton.
Right, they'll be able to concentrate more.
Okay, so they're, 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 one of their key roles, that doesn't change. They're continuing to, that's part of the transfer.
Does the dispatchers union allow them to do data conversion?
I mean, yes, sure. I, I don't think they'll be a problem.
They kinda do data entry now. I mean, one of the things, they won't have, uh, our new records management system until at least May, so they're still gonna have to be in there entering calls for service in the current system.
Yeah. So the squeeze really is between now and March 1st.
Yeah.
Cause you're running out of people.
We've got a six week.
On Sunday night.
Tonight.
Oh, oh, next Sunday night.
Next Sunday. We've got a six-week window here that.
That's really.
We're scrambling a little bit, but, but we've got a couple of plans that'll work one way or the other.
Sure.
But it's, it's the six-week, six-week window that we've had to juggle things to make it work.
But safety is not going to be compromised. That's the key.
Yep. So, so if you're okay with pursuing plan A, which is bringing on board the new officer, um, and using, using him in multiple ways to help us fill the, the dispatch shifts, we'll have the discussion with the dispatch union folks next week.
Tuesday.
To, it would be helpful for the, for the next six weeks for them to switch from their 5-2 schedule to a 4-2 schedule. And it actually has some advantages to them because we won't have to force them as often on weekends. I'm hopeful.
Maybe get a little more time off.
Oh, yes, but, but more weekend work. So that's, that's the give and take. So we'll have that discussion.
How soon would this person start then?
Tomorrow morning. Literally. I mean, he's ready to go.
Yeah.
Nice.
That, that's one of the attractions. We don't need to.
He's in, he's in the process of going to Rowley as a reserve, uh, and, and he's the one of the, the only people I talked about, the Bridge Academy. He's actually bridged with the hours, so it's up to our discretion when we.
Is this officer?
David.
Thank you.
So, I'm not hearing objections. So, so that's part A. Part B then is to discuss a little bit, you know, your thoughts on how best to, um, communicate all of this to the public. You know, we had talked to, you know, Regional Planning, we would have multiple months to, to educate the citizenry about the, the changeover. Obviously, it'll happen a little quicker now. The, the folks at Regional are very agreeable to hosting public meetings so that people get to know them, they could get to know them personally. They're willing to host open houses at the center so that citizens could go up there and have a tour if they like. They're, they're really quite accommodating.
I think that's a really nice idea.
And then again, just, you know, what sort of, um, press releases do we want to work on and that sort of thing.
Well, I think first of all is, uh, changing the timeline. It's on, online. Do we, you know, that, that, as well as putting, putting on the Public Safety Dispatch site, the, the offers for public forums, for going down to the rec center. And try to get some feedback as to what people might like to do. And they might have some ideas that we haven't come up with. Maybe, and Tiffany, definitely get Tiffany to do a, a flash.
Can we get a, like a communications plan? Just lay something out and maybe is Tiffany gonna drive that and say, we're gonna do A, B, C, and D, here are the timeframes, and maybe do two of these and one of those? Cause we're sitting here with, you know, we can come up with ideas from the sky, but might as well.
Kathy, Kathy has unmuted and she's, she's the.
Yeah, I, um, I, I understand that, uh, you know, the Regional Center wanted to concentrate on the actual conversion when we last spoke with them a couple of weeks ago. But I thought that they also might have some draft plan or thoughts, uh, you know, like John is suggesting. I agree that what should become, uh, something should be put before this board as a draft that we could then comment on, et cetera. But I, I thought that the regional team might already have something or, or at least some ideas on what that should look like as well. Because some of the things me, we may want to happen, um, the timing for those communications may actually be, some may be before we go live and others may be after we go live.
But we have a pretty good handle on the timeline now. We did not have that two or three months ago. So.
Well, I would say we, um, there are some things that are gonna get done sooner and other things that may get done later in order to accommodate taking the call sooner. So, so, so that, the timeline is shifting.
Well, it is, cause here, for example, January 20 of this, this month, we're going to be putting lobby cameras and, and intercom in, in, installed. So I think first and foremost, we, we need to update the information on the, uh, transition to regional project timeline.
Yeah, cause the, the lobby cameras are not critical, are not that critical.
Right, right.
And, and radio connectivity is.
Right. And so I just think that, that that's the first thing. And maybe we, um, so, so if, if we can have that updated, have Tiffany, um, maybe, um, we can get from the chief or you and the chief, get a, the, the statement put out and then an article in the Cricket.
When?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put together that, that's down to the plan.
Right.
And we'll map it out.
I just, you know, I know this came about quickly, but I think it would be, it's important to let I just, you know, I know this came about quickly, but I think it would be, it's important to let the, the townspeople know.
We, we do have a, a timeline of critical needs for the March 1 deadline, so I, we could probably work out for that.
Yes.
Tiffany has her hand up. Tiffany?
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to comment that I, I would love to help you update that. Would just love to gather the new facts that you all have received. And I don't know if I should work with Todd on that or, or with the Black Board, but to understand what's changed and, and the, the new timeline and then create a plan to inform the residents, so.
Excellent, thank you Tiffany. Yeah, you, Todd and Greg, I think.
We have a meeting there Thursday, when we guys do the staffing issue, so we can probably talk about it.
That's right. That's at 1:00 or 1:30, I think it is, yeah, cause I remember. I don't have to go to that, right?
I think they changed it to.
Or did they? It was 1:00?
Can I, um?
Oh, I definitely can't make that one. Okay. Any other comments on dispatch? Good?
Wondering how soon the, the Middleton Center can could attend something here.
Yes, they, they have offered that.
Yeah, but if they're working on the critical timeline, I don't want to distract them. On the other hand, it probably would be good to, to put them in front of the town before March 1st.
Yes, yep.
Good. So probably Allison.
Yes, yeah, yeah, most likely it would be Allison attending as she can, we can see if the sixth could work for her.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So just attend on the.
We should have a pretty good game plan by then. And so let me, let me see if that can work for her schedule.
Okay, excellent. And so we've got that. So this is now over here on the taskbar. I need, I need stronger glasses. All righty. There we go. And so so on the board action items, we'll hope future meeting Allison, February 6th. Okay. Any other comments, questions regarding dispatch? Okay, seeing none. Thank you Chief, very much.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Thank you for all the work you played.
Yes.
That's great.
Thank you.
You're prepared.
Thank you Chief. Ambulance option.
Yeah, Todd has really worked hard on this.
Yeah.
Give him a lot of credit.
He's, he's lined up the ducks.
He's, he's been on top of it from day one.
He's got, he's got things laid out.
Deserves a lot of credit for it, yes.
And at the meeting we attended, he, he had a lot of really good, when we were at the North Shore 911. The amount of work he put in and the presentation he provided was really, the data he brought, didn't you think Kathy?
Very well done.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so now ambulance. Look away Anne.
I continue to be concerned that we have advertised ambulance service that we don't provide. I think changing the squad to a response, a, a, a a paramedic response vehicle would give the town what we think, what they think they're getting. It is to say that there will be somebody who will help you from the town there within minutes of your calling 911.
What do you mean, what we advertise? I don't, I don't.
Okay, what, when we talk about, in the town meeting, talk about the budget, we talked about the fact that we have a very expensive fire department, we have a very expensive fire department because it's full of paramedics. And we have, I don't remember whether anybody actually said it recently, but we have, we have said in the past that we have two ambulances. And I think that's why the town votes for that.
So you would favor a full transport of ambulances?
No, I don't care. What the town, I think what the town wants is somebody who is there who can deal with CP, who can deal with.
Who can administer first aid. Paramedic level.
Paramedic level first aid immediately.
And I, I agree. I think that, that we have heard very strongly that, that people want safety
Yep.
to be top priority, top notch.
Right. And I think that the, the, turning the, the squad car into something that will bring paramedic level first aid quickly.
So did we get a report? Did we get the information back? Cause Chief, didn't he last time say there was more information on the, on the conversion of that?
The squad car? Of the squad?
Whatever that.
Vehicle.
When we, when we, when we talked about it, at least at one point when we talked about it, the question of, well, we've got somebody who wants to buy the squad vehicle and then we could.
No, they don't. Right? Or do they?
They're willing to re-quote it.
Okay.
They, excuse me?
Re-quote.
Yes, their option period, I think, had expired at the end of December.
So it's a different.
That's not to say they don't want it, but you gotta
Right.
check back. And right now, that requires a new, what does it require?
A new engine?
Was it an engine? Was that an engine?
Not, not on the squad.
No, that was the ambulance then.
The ambulance.
Oh, all right.
Ambulance requires a mechanical.
That requires a bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
Right, so the squad car needs to be reconfigured with different compartments
Oh, okay.
to hold equipment.
And he wants that.
If I recall correctly, it's in the $5,000 range.
Oh, this is.
Five, it's under 10.
But he also wanted the different.
That's for the ambulance.
Oh, good golly.
Not for the squad.
For the squad, you don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's not lifting anybody.
Right, the squad would not be a transport.
Just CPR, okay, thank you.
It's just medical support onsite.
So you're saying that, that we don't, we're.
There's a second. Obviously, we still have the primary ambulance. This is only used when that's occupied or on a call already.
But that's short money.
It's short money.
And it's good service.
Yep.
And.
Do we have the staff for that though?
We have to.
The staff.
That's a one-person deal.
That's a one, and we can.
Well, you can use.
The police?
Yeah, you can. I mean, police go to, police go to the calls anyways.
Right.
So they're on scene, they're gonna assist. And then the paramedic is there with the squad and you wait for the
The transport.
Mutual aid transport.
Which happens 10 times last year.
So for the.
But when you, when you, when you see in the paper that there was a call and transport was received, refused, this is where the squad is, is, is a good answer.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting point you make. How many calls do they make where transport is refused? Maybe that was asked in one of our meetings.
It, it, it's recorded in the Cricket and it's, it's a lot.
It's fairly, yeah.
It's a fair number.
Yeah.
So showing up with a vehicle that's not gonna transport is probably meeting whatever the needs are for.
Yeah, I mean, you don't know that.
You don't know that.
But depending on what the call-in is.
But we wouldn't have to call for mutual aid.
Yeah, right. And that happens, you would not.
I think that probably is call at the same time. He's leaving the station in the squad car, you're getting, you're calling for mutual aid at the same time.
Yes, yes.
And.
Okay, fine, so that's.
But you can, yeah, when you get to the scene, you may.
You're, you're doing what you're doing until this.
Yeah, maybe I will turn them around.
Yes, that's right. They may not even get there.
But the truth is that the vehicles do need to be run. And so that's not necessarily a bad thing, that it goes out and, and goes back. Okay. So are, Kathy, do you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I agree with the squad. It is short money, good service. Don't we talk about the ladder truck too?
No, 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 no.
Okay, just a squad, okay.
Different.
Yeah, I, I agree with the squad. It's, it's, it's a good option. And I, I like what Anne said, though. I hadn't thought of that, the, the number of refused transports makes it even a better option.
Yep. Okay, there we go. Any further discussion on the ambulance?
Okay, when do we do it?
So you've asked the finance committee to also weigh in until their schedule to have that further discussion on the 9th of February.
Okay.
Okay. So ambulance, FinCom meeting 112 now, 29. So we just say that's our recommendation and do they agree?
Yep, yep.
Does that sound good?
Well, I'm prepared to argue with it if they don't agree.
Then we go back. Should we be there for the 9th?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that'll be important.
Yeah, I will try to make that.
Well, and I, I am.
That's when staffing is gonna be finalized.
Okay.
We'll have more, you know, more details on that.
I.
So Fe-February is gonna go by really quickly.
I will not be in town that night, but I will try to zoom in. I will be attending my mother's 89th birthday.
Oh, very good.
I am in transit, but I think I get back pretty close to in time. I'm back from Utah then.
Okay, and I believe that Kathy and Brian will be here for that the night. Is that correct? Yep, Kathy says yes.
I, I will be here. What time is that meeting? 7?
7, yes.
Okay.
So I could send my husband, but I don't think that'll help. But, but so. He's very reasonable. I don't know why he married me, but anyway. So we will have quorum. And you'll head it up. It'll be your lead and I'll just zoom in. Because whomever's leading has to be there in person.
Yeah.
So John, I'll, I'll confirm with Brian and that way if you can, you can.
Yeah, I just, I don't know when my flight gets in.
Yep, okay. So that Greg, will you? Do you want me to send an email to the board about the joint meeting on the 9th? Or is that something Debbie?
I, 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 yeah, we'll work with Gail and Sarah.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay. Have we discussed the, the discussion items? Are we set on ambulance? Kathy? Oh, wait, hello, Sarah Malish. Unmute? Are you, and Sarah, are you talking as FinCom?
FinCom.
Okay.
As FinCom.
Okay.
Yes, so I have made note of making the February 9th a joint meeting and to make sure we have the ambulance on it.
Thank you.
You don't need to send any lead to us.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
I got it, got you covered.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have the Select Board Policies Second Reading Regarding Correspondence. And I has Town Council taken a look at this? Cause I, I.
We, no, we have not gotten that back yet.
Okay, cause I do not want to go forward unless Town Council has vetted this. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I should have, I should have.
No, no, that's, no, no, okay, so we will put that to 26.
If 26 is getting full, I think we'd.
26.
Okay, shall we say then 221?
22.
221.
Oh, is that another holiday?
Holiday, yeah.
Oh, geez, we just.
Oh, it's on here as the.
Another Tuesday.
Okay.
It's another Tuesday, yeah. President, is the president saying it's the 21st?
Oh, 21, yeah, so the president's 20th, so 21 is the day.
The day, I know the day.
Nope, nope, nope.
So it's 21, yes.
This is now gonna go.
But it's a Tuesday.
Yes, another Tuesday. So 221, so now.
Given, given that one of the members is never available on Tuesdays, would it be possible to change?
He can, he can with enough, if we give him advance notice. So, and I've got his calendar back.
Okay, fine.
At my, I meant to bring that, but so this is. Sorry about that. All right, so this goes to, next up, we have public notices. Seaport, this one's good, Greg?
Yeah, this, this is good news, Anne said. Thanks to Bayon's good work. He received another grant from the Seaport Economic Council. 560 plus thousand for the extension of the transient docks at, at Ree Park. He's very hopeful for a second grant, a, a big grant, a boating infrastructure grant, I think it's called, to pay for the rest of the total cost. So he's optimistic that the expansion will be, be provided without any town dollars. So this is a major step forward for that and stay tuned on part two. But, but again, thanks to the Seaport Council and thanks to Bayon's
And Bayon.
working with them and, and securing this grant for that, for that expansion. So this extended towards, towards the Drove Ridge, sort of parallel the, the Red Road Bank, BURB. That's, that's there.
Does it have the say bump out?
Has an L at the end.
It has an L with, with a bump out station there?
Correct.
And the water, is it water?
Well, water and electricity would be added to, to, to the length of it, yeah.
Are they, are these pilings going straight all the way out? Or is it gonna be?
Yes.
Yes.
Very same design as what's there now.
Cause aren't those, doesn't the?
I mean, it requires
Yeah.
that design.
Yep. I know people were concerned about those down at Tuck's Point initially and now they're, I.
It's not as bad as I thought.
No, no.
I was concerned.
Exactly.
It's not as.
It's ugly, but it's.
Obvious.
It does.
Yeah, you got a front row seat.
You know, I, they don't even, they don't bother me, but, but I don't have a front row seat.
Depending if it's low tide or high tide.
Yeah.
No, basically. Actually, it's at Ree Park that they're most obvious.
So that was the reason for not going the other way. People were.
Yeah, so going right up to the, right up the beach street?
Right.
Yeah.
So there was.
Also water depth.
Right.
Yeah, depth and, and, yeah, anyway. Okay. You had administrators report, please, and, and give our thanks to Bayon.
Yes, absolutely. So, yes, I alluded earlier to the possibility of a special meeting to talk about the governance project. This is the work you've had Susan Beckton move forward on. She's had many conversations with different department leaders and various boards and committees. She's ready to have a more in-depth presentation to you and have some discussions about some new, good directions going forward. So it'd be beneficial, I think, to dedicate a meeting for that rather than try to squeeze it in as part of your regular meeting.
I agree. I agree.
So I, I was throwing out the twenty-fifth or the thirtieth as possibilities.
So the twenty-fifth is a Wednesday.
Twenty-fifth is a Wednesday. Uh, or we could go to a, a morning time, most any, any day of the week.
Well, I can.
Right, right.
But. I think.
So I'm not locked into those two dates. I'm just.
I have, uh, there's a water task force meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
And, yeah.
What was the other day?
Social agreement, uh, and the water task force, and a dog class, so.
So what about?
The thirtieth?
As Greg said, do you want to look at a morning? I mean, depending on the morning, if I'm not at work, I can.
I'm, I'm good for any of them.
Kathy?
Um, yeah, it would just depend on the morning, but, um, you know, Brian is not here to represent himself. He has a full-time job. I'm not sure mornings really work for him. We do have the extra Monday evening. Is that the thirtieth of January?
Yep.
Did you say the planning board was meeting on?
Uh, they have a question of, of meeting, and they may well be meeting that night, but I'm not, I don't know.
We could meet from five thirty to that.
Uh, yeah, Brian can sometimes get away if you do something at four thirty or four o'clock.
Maybe try five to six would matter, five thirty to six thirty?
Five to six thirty, thinking an hour and a half.
Okay, so shall we put that in and double check with Susan?
Four thirty to six.
When's that? January, uh, thirtieth?
The thirtieth.
January, Monday, the thirtieth.
What time are we asking for?
Um, four, four thirty?
Four thirty?
So four thirty to five thirty? And we'll check with Brian.
Possibly to six.
Yeah, that way it gives us a little extra time. Little, little, and is that all right?
Oh, I, I have no trouble with the time. I, I think, I think this is going to take more time than.
Yeah.
It will take at least all the time we allot to it, and probably needs more.
Yep. I agree.
I think we should plan at least an hour and a half.
Yeah. Okay, um... I, I'll, I'll text Brian and ask if he can possibly do that. Okay. And, let's see. Okay, I will let you know about that.
Yep, and then, uh, so as part of that meeting, we might have a discussion about citizen outreach listening tour of some sort as well. I think that dovetails with the governance project. And then we were, originally, we had planned the, the, the next quarterly views for Chief Fitzgerald and me. So we'll, we'll do that at the, at the next meeting, on the sixth.
On the sixth.
Add to that agenda. And then also, potentially on the sixth, uh, so talk about Jersey Lane and Forster Road, so that's why.
What about those?
So the issue of, uh, truck traffic, for one. So there, there's, uh, you know, some, some residents were concerned about trucks getting stuck, using it as a shortcut to some of the other roads beyond. So there was a, uh, I, I gave permission to put up a, uh, you know, no through traffic, through truck traffic. Someone interpreted that as being able to block all traffic, which is not possible. It's, it's a, even though it stretches private, it is open to the public.
Right.
So we get into this. So to make, to, to make a road officially a truck exclusion route, there is a formal process.
Okay.
Uh, I was taking a bit of a shortcut to say, you know, it's, put up a sign, but to make it official, we should go through a hearing process, et cetera, let the, the butters know and all of that. It's, um, good.
This is a town process. This isn't a state road. This is not a state.
Correct.
This is our.
It's, the state requires it.
Yeah. We did that on Mill, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, we did that on Mill Street.
Uh, to, the state dictates the process that a town has to follow for a, a truck exclusion route. So my thought would be to, uh, have the preliminary discussion with neighbors about doing that. And then if there's agreement of going forward, then set in motion the formal process.
Kathy, did you have a comment?
Um, more of a question, I guess. Um, so when we say truck exclusion, you mean as a pass-through, correct?
Correct, correct. Yeah, local, local delivery trucks, yes, absolutely, they're allowed. It's, it's a, it's an exclusion for through truck traffic.
Okay, so we are putting this, and, and this is, uh, are you the owner of this, or?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And so we will be.
That's February sixth.
Yep.
Backing in February sixth.
Well, it is. Well, it's.
Well, we'll sit. I mean, if we have to juggle something, we will, but.
Yep, yep.
That should be fairly short.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, anything else on your?
Uh, just MMA annual meeting is, is this, under this week, so I'll be, uh, I'll be attending that.
And that's in Boston.
It's in Boston.
There you go.
Yeah, uh, Jeff Beckwith, who has been the lead of MMA for over thirty years.
He's retiring.
He's retiring.
That's remarkable. Wow, yeah.
That's a big change.
Yeah, yeah.
He's, he's done a, he's done an excellent job for the organization, so.
Absolutely.
Those would be big shows to fill.
Yes. Okay, uh, I guess that does it for tonight. Uh...
Uh, let's see. Yeah, we did the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Covered that.
We did. Motion to adjourn? May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Yes, you have a motion to adjourn.
Okay, moved by John Round, seconded by Ann Harrison, roll call vote. Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Enjoy, Kathy.
Thank you.
John Round?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yep.
Becky Jake says yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.